I am called to order the June 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Media Borough Council. Welcome to all of you who have joined us, whether in person or remotely. Before we begin, just say a few words, as is customary, we are not out of the woods yet. Be mindful of others and continue to think about the right time and place to wear your masks and maintain social distance. If you have not yet been vaccinated, please do so. If you know of folks who are not vaccinated, please talk to them, try to convince them that they should do so as well. And lastly, now that we are moving towards a more open time, continue to think about the local options, from shopping and dining, shopping and dining local where you can, where you can. All right, so we'll begin with the legislative members standing on the left.
The legislative members to the flag of the United States of America and to the yellow light for which the stands, one nation, one liberty, and the freedom of the liberty of the justice for all.
Before we begin with our first of two sessions of public comment and privilege of the floor, we do have a couple of housekeeping matters to attend to. The first is approval of the workshop meeting minutes from this past month, May. For our motion to approve the meeting minutes passed and submitted.
Is there a second?
Is there a discussion? Here we are, and all those in favor of approving the May 2021 workshop meeting minutes passed and submitted, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion has been unanimous. All right, the second housekeeping item is our council meeting minutes from this past month. For our motion to approve those passed and submitted.
Is there a second?
Is there a discussion? Here we are, and all those in favor of approving the May 2021 council meeting minutes passed and submitted, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion has been unanimous. All right, now we have public comment and privilege of the floor. This is the first of two public opportunities for the public to engage with us. We are unusual in this area. We permit such instances, both at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. So if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, tell us your name, where you live, and what's on your...
Hi, Robin Lasserson, 342 West Fourth Street. I'm the co-chair of Keep Media Green, and I have four things to say, and I'm just really hoping that you're not going to ask me to... And others could be free for non-repetitive. We're going to do the best we can to express ourselves, and, you know, we poured our heart and soul into this campaign to save the Centennial Woods for about six months, and I know you guys have been working hard, which is what we elect you to do, and I just hope that you'll allow us at what might be the last meeting on the topic, just to let people say their pieces best they can without feeling pressured to rush through it. So I just wanted to start by publicly acknowledging the bold and visionary action that Delaware County took just last night to preserve the Donkey and the Forest in Marple Township by initiating the process of eminent domain. This is the largest intact wooded parcel of open space left in the county, and it was just...I'm so grateful for that action, and I know that...I'm sure they felt as a governing body that there was some degree of risk in that action, and so I'm even more impressed by it, and I just feel like that is the kind of leadership that we deserve to have in Delaware County. And I was struck particularly by the public comments made by Councilwoman Kevin Magg, both at the agenda meeting and the legislative meeting. I mean, all of the council members spoke in favor of the action, but he really went to kind of a deep place. He observed the obvious, which is, we're here on the planet for just a very short time, and he compared us to links in the chain with people who came before us, and the links and the people who come after us, and the need for it to not be a weak link. And he reflected that of all the many actions that the county takes, this is maybe one of the few that has...that will have real generational impact, that will affect grandchildren and great-grandchildren and generations to come. And it just brings to mind, sort of thinking, seven generations ahead. He talked about how being in the woods can heal the human race's relationship with nature, and how...sorry, I was trying not to get emotional this time, but, you know, he just said that Delaware County is waking up to the change that needs to happen, and I just...I needed to take this moment to lift that up. I also wanted to thank the county and observe, because it's very relevant locally, and thank them for releasing the request for proposals for the second round of their Greenways Open Space grant funding for municipalities and nonprofits, and I hope that the borough plans to make an application to protect or acquire some part of the remaining 23 acres of vulnerable open space here and in the borough in this next round, and ideally to dialogue with the community and advocates before making a decision about what to apply for, so that we can all be on the same side going forward. That would be very nice. About the pending vote on whether to approve the land development plan that would destroy the Centennial Woods and result in additional luxury housing in the borough, I'd like to say that even if you think this development plan is great for the community, I hope people consider that the developer has not met either of the published criteria for waiving the two-stage approval process, preliminary and final. The literal enforcement of the two-stage approval process will not exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question, and they have not submitted any justification, let alone hardship due to peculiar conditions pertaining to land in writing as part of the actual application as required by our code. And the fact that they've had to participate in lots of long meetings is not an undue hardship due to peculiar conditions pertaining to the land, and neither is their desire to begin construction before winter time. The fact that our borough engineers listers say that it's basically a final plan, and probably all the outstanding issues will be okay, and, you know, this is a combined preliminary thing, is a process that's evolved, and we've been doing it successfully for a long time, and lots of other municipalities do this, is just not a good enough reason, in my opinion, to grant that waiver. That last part about everybody does this kind of particularly rankles me, just reminds me of like when I was a teenager, and I told my mom, you know, everyone else's parents are giving permission to do this bad thing that I wanted to do, and she was wise, and she told me that that would not be the basis for her decisions. And finally, I just want to say that if there is any part of any of you that wants to vote yes, because you're kind of pissed off at Keep Media Green for our interpretation of events or actions that we've taken, and/or if there's any part of you that wants to vote yes because you really just like to get this over with, because the conflict has been uncomfortable, then I want you to know that I understand those feelings. I get that it's not fun to be the subject of a public pressure campaign, and I wish that it hadn't been necessary, and I think it's safe to say that we've all experienced some version of those feelings throughout this controversy, and that we can all empathize with each other, at least to some degree. That said, I sincerely hope and trust that neither of those feelings will have any role in deciding how you cast your vote this evening, and I would just like to end by asking you again that you vote no on the development application at 115 West Sixth Street. Thank you.
Judy.
My name is Judy Fowler. I live at 325 South Monroe Street. I'm here to talk about affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Group believes everybody's home should have housing for everybody. Right now, media housing costs are out of reach for a great many people. People who bought houses three years ago cannot afford to live here today. This means artists, public servants, small business owners, and healthcare workers, among others, cannot be part of our community. Housing is a social justice issue, and it is simply immoral not to help provide decent and safe housing as part of our town. The compelling reason for forming the Affordable Housing Group is that over the last decade, media has become less racially and economically diverse. In the past 20 years, media has lost over half of its black population. A racially and economically diverse community is one of the cornerstones of a healthy community. The diversity of media is what attracted many of us to our town. Media was a place that recognized the importance of diversity. In that sense, media was a gem in Delaware County. Economic forces have changed media in ways that make it unrecognizable to those of us who have lived here for many years. Affordable housing is a national problem. We hope that media will do its part by building...to ease that problem by building affordable housing. Media is not the only community in Pennsylvania or the nation with a shortage of affordable housing. This shortage has made media homoracially and economically segregated. The question is, is media part of the solution or part of the problem? Are we in YIMBY, not in my backyard, or everybody's hometown? The choice is big. Do we want an exclusive community with an invisible fence surrounding it, or diverse open one? Media needs sustainable and sensible development. That means balancing the needs of affordable housing with the needs for open space. Affordable housing starts with requiring developers to build a percentage of affordable units with all new developments. It means building smaller affordable houses rather than mansions. Houses with smaller footprints use less energy and natural resources, making them more sustainable type of housing. While a proposed home improvement loan program for current low-income homeowners will increase the value of their houses, we will not do anything to alleviate the current shortage of affordable housing. This is a huge challenge that requires exploring many options for both affordable housing and open space. Affordable housing parks are not mutually exclusive. The size of buildings and the amount of green space, green space can be part of a zoning code. There are ways to build houses that are economically eco-friendly. Making this happen will take time, but it can be done. There are many communities throughout the United States that have done this, such as Arlington, Massachusetts, and Davidson, North Carolina. Conversation about green space does not include a conversation about affordable housing. We are at risk of missing an opportunity and creating that invisible fence around media. With collaboration, compromise, and cooperation by all members of the community, we can create a fair, equitable, and green town.
Good evening. Good evening. It was an accident. You should see the other guy. My name is Mary Mallory. My address is 222...my address is 222 Rikers Avenue in Swartford. I'd like to speak about development possibility over here at 115 West Sixth Street. I looked at it again today. I have no notes. Work with me, and I'm not sure what I'm going to say, but what I want to say, I hope that you hear me. And you go home, and you think, the lady who taught...looks like a tree, the lady who taught school probably grew. I think you helped me. I feel very strongly that each of us has the opportunity here to do something better, to do something different, to do something else. Four acres, only acre, four houses, not acre property. If Mr. Wong hears these comments, I'd say, hey, why don't I walk in that beautiful house you have where the trolley tracks and say, oh, look at the four houses. But I think the possibility exists to do something else, to do something different. You've heard us all. Apparently, that's good, because apparently you...just somebody go off. Well, better do. That's not really what we're shooting for. And regarding the word "we," there's no "we," "us," there's no "us," and we're all here wanting little tiny getting smaller planet. And so the comments you made earlier regarding keep your masks on and whatnot, I got vaccinated months ago, but I'm doing it. I'm paying attention. Are you paying attention? Do you really see what you're doing, the possibility of saying, go ahead? Did any of you have a parent say, just because the other kids are jumping on the broken bridge doesn't mean you...everybody's doing it. What happened over here with the Donkey and the Forest, I lived there when there were cows. I did. Please do something else. Please do something different. Please do something better. Thank you.
Anyone else, please go forward. Tell us your name, where you live.
Michael Strawn, 499 West Jefferson Street, Park 507, Media Borough. First, I wanted to actually speak on our Pride festivities in media. So I've spoken with Congresswoman Scamble's office and Mayor McMahon on June 27 at 11:00 a.m. on the Plum Street wall. We're going to conduct a Facebook Live reading of the proclamation. We're going to hear Congresswoman Scamble's words on what we can do to pursue equality throughout our nation and our community, and we're going to recognize some of the businesses and organizations in the local community that are working to bring equality to our community, our Commonwealth, and our nation. So we would welcome you to come and visit and be there. It's going to be at 11 o'clock. We don't want to draw a large crowd. We're trying to look towards an event for National Coming Out Day later on in October for a larger event in media, but for now, we want to have more of a smaller gathering as we're opening up.
So what's a smaller gathering?
Maybe about 30 to 50 people. I wanted to thank the borough for, once again, celebrating Pride Month and recognizing the quality. I remember just two years ago, Media Borough recognized it, and now other municipalities throughout Delaware County are following suit, from Upper Darby to Lansing, Haverford. There are many different municipalities, but I remember Media Borough that way. So I just want to thank and remind people of that. So I do want to mention a couple of other things from previous media. I just want to make sure that everyone on our council is always listening and is vigilant and wants to hear from all the neighbors of our community, regardless of how long some of them may speak in regards to issues that are passionate. Sometimes when you're standing up here, you think of new things to think of, and so it's important to hear people, as long as they need to be heard, because we are members of the community, we're voters, we're citizens, and we're active. I just want to basically state that I hope that you will recognize your planning commissions, recommendation, and follow the recommendations completely. I believe that when you have an ordinance, you should follow it. You as a council created, and it took a long time to create, a chicken ordinance, for instance. It was painstaking. You longed to create this. You had so many details added to it, it took a very long time to create, and we all thank you for that, and we want you to enforce it. The same thing with every other law in the books. An ordinance is an ordinance, all to a T. That's all I ask, and I hope that you consider all our voices here today. Thank you.
Ms. Galore.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Galore, 506 Park Edge Lane, and I'm here primarily to talk about some Friends of Glen Providence Park events. After not being able to hold events for a number of months last year due to COVID, this year, we are delighted to be returning our Arts in the Park Summer Concerts. So we started...and you get a built-in social distancing. It's all outside, on the lawn, and you can bring your blanket or chair, and timed them so that most of them are sponsored by restaurants, and we have timed these concerts for years so that you can go for this late afternoon concert and then walk you to town for dinner and shopping along State Street. So it's in partnership with the community, and the first concert is Danny Ocean doing soul and jazz-pop fusion on June 26th. That's next Saturday, and there are a couple of extra celebratory things about that. One is that we had for years dreamed about doing a mural on the cemented windows and doors at the main entrance that is called Comforts. It's a comfort station, so it used to be bathrooms back when it was put in in 1935 by the WK, the Works Progress Administration, and about 20 years ago, they were cemented over because of vandalism and maintenance issues. So it's been...that part's been a little bit of an eyesore, but we, in collaboration with the Arts Council, like some of them are here, or at least I saw them earlier, so there's some Arts Council members, we collaborated with them, and we are having a mural, which actually is starting to be painted tomorrow morning. It's been primed, and so there's going to be a mural on the windows and doors. There's four windows, it's going to be the Four Seasons, and it'll be eastern woodland plants, and the two doors are going to be a concert scene, because it's just upheld from the concert stage. So we will be sort of unveiling that at the first concert, so we'll be celebrating the mural. And in addition, we realized after we had already scheduled her that so Danny Ocean is LGBTQ, and this is during Pride Month, so we'll be celebrating Pride Month at that first concert as well, so we thought that was exciting. The second concert, another cause for celebration, is with Paul Downey and Friends, Rhythm and Soul. It also happens to coincide with our 10th anniversary, so we first met on July 14, 2011, and we have been working our hearts out ever since. 10 years, all volunteer, thousands of volunteer hours, and so we will be celebrating our 10-year anniversary, and we'll be back next month to talk a little bit more about that, but I wanted to mention it now, because your next meeting is after our anniversary celebration. So that concert is July 10. And then we have Class of Oatar, which Blowing Mind Heart Strings, that's with the Kostler Duo on August 7th. And then Maladelfia is doing African folkloric performance art, which is going to be spectacular on September 11th. So that is our concert series, those are our summer events, and again, we'll be back to talk about that, or talk about our anniversary next month, because there's lots more we'll want to record about that. And then just personally, I'd like to speak in support of some of the people who have spoken already this evening, so Robin, who spoke so passionately about the Centennial Woods, I just support everything that she said, and I heard recently that, I think it's Warren Buffett, but don't quote me on that, because it could have been somebody else, but one of these, you know, ultra-villainers, that one of his, supposedly one of the things that he looks at when he's making decisions is, will I be proud to tell this to my children? Like, is this something that I want my children to remember me by? And so I thought that that's sort of another take on, you know, looking ahead seven generations and the importance of, you know, saving what we have. I moved to media in 1993. I had seen it once after I'd gone through high school and college on the Main Line, came here and was blown away. I said, wow, a real town in this area with a real soul. I saw the charlie going down State Street, and this is just where I wanted to live. So I've lived here since 1993, and I absolutely fell in love with this town, and there are people who have been working passionately for decades to make it better. People like Keep Media Green and Media Arts Council and different nonprofit organizations in there, you know, advocating to make it better, not have it erode, and so just I hope that people really look in their hearts and think carefully before making a decision about something that can't be brought back. And it just doesn't seem, you know, anything that could be done to save any of those trees is a worthwhile decision and worthwhile consideration. In addition, affordable housing, I too have seen the demographics change drastically from the street when I used to live on the 400 block of West Fourth Street, actually, I guess it's a 300 block of West Fourth Street. It's changed dramatically, and anything that can be done to support affordable housing. And also, again, you know, we'll be celebrating at our first concert, but I also wanted to just speak in support of Pride Month, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. The last question is... A lot of ways, we want to be at home, and somebody else who would like to speak.
Julie Smith, 800 North Olive Street. This whole process has been the closest I've ever paid attention to borough processes, but I know this council has done some amazing things in the past for the town, and I wish I had been more involved then to issue treaties instead of this contentious issue that I've been part of for the last six months. There are members of this council who I've had great conversations with and who I have gotten to know a little, and they have beautiful hearts and minds. I've come to understand that governments are about that, and I get it, not everybody can get what they want all the time. I get it, and I understand how hard it must be. My concern lies with the idea of saying that actions speak louder than words. I've been told by council members, a few of them, that they love community engagement, which has been extremely uncomfortable for me, but it seems like only when the residents don't get in the way is when we want the community engagement for some. I was devastated to see at the workshop meeting that because two members of council motioned in a certain way, it was assumed the waiver was granted. There are seven members of council, so hopefully everybody has their own heart and their own mind and will vote in that way. I also saw some council members, because the discussions I'm understanding with Sunshine involve, have all the discussions have to take place in public, and I see some conversations trying to take place, or questions trying to be asked, and then they're just spoken over, and they can't even get a sentence out. So how is anybody supposed to make a decision if they can't even get their questions heard and answered? So my group's residents have spoken up against the Centennial Woods getting decimated, and I wish that people would stop saying it's private. I get it, it's private, and I want the owners to get whatever they deserve. It's a beautiful property, and the house is worth saving, and it has so much potential, and someone at some point did love those trees. So I think it's a compliment that it's, people are looking after it so much, and we think it's worth saving. Now, I know some councils members are thinking of allowing it to go through, knowing that surrounding residents will probably have lawsuits on their hands, but they're granting a waiver to pass track it anyway. So we fought for what, to have it pass tracked. When I spoke with my neighbors over these issues over the last six months, they said they weren't even going to try. They said they're not going to listen to us. But I was part of the team, part of Keep Media Green, who really encouraged us to become part of our community, a community that we cared about, and I kept coming out and kept becoming involved, and I got to know a lot of people through this. And unfortunately, I hear that actions are speaking louder than words, and my neighbors are being proven right, that everything that I've done and that we've all fought for the last six months didn't matter at all. Certainly, I didn't want to spend hours and hours, I've got two little kids at home, I didn't want to spend hours with these meetings, but this is a town that I want them to grow up in and love and have the trees and the town and the unity that you can walk down the streets and say hi to everybody. And these meetings not only were uncomfortable, I even lost a friend over this. But I spoke from the heart to protect a town I love, and I encourage all the council members to do the same, as uncomfortable as it may be. Thank you.
Would you like to move over there?
Hi, Mark Spatton, 115 West Seventh Street. Actually, seeing as this was perhaps maybe the last time I'm speaking to you, I actually printed something out to organize my thoughts. I'm here with my wife Diana. Again, we live at 115 West Seventh Street. We've been there for about eight years. Our property backs up to the green property, which is 115 West Sixth Street, which I think a lot of us are here to talk about tonight. I have no real stake in this development project, other than as an observer of the process and a neighbor. I'm not affiliated with the developer in any way, I'm not running for office, so I'm just here to advocate for what I think would be best for the neighborhood, and I'm going to share with you a view that's held by not just us, but some nearby neighbors, including our next-door neighbors, the Conards, who unfortunately could not be here this evening. The main message that I want to get across to the council is that I think you guys should vote to accept the four-house development plan that's been proposed. I'll look at this, or I'll speak to this somewhat practically, I can't help it, I'm an engineer, so I'll sort of go through my thought process on this. If not, if it's a no vote, what would the goal be for this project? Would the borough... Would the borough intend to purchase the property for public use? I know that's been discussed by some. I would contend it's a terrible location for public space, given that it's quite isolated, hidden from view, and would be expensive to maintain in any form, especially this current family. I think there's better and cheaper possible public spaces that the borough could acquire. Or perhaps, if it was a no vote, would that be because the borough intended to purchase it for private use? I would contend with this one, that that's a waste of taxpayer dollars that they may spend on other things that would actually benefit everyone in the borough in material ways. And, and I guess furthermore, I haven't really heard any serious intention to move the developers by the borough. So perhaps is the intent to scuttle the current agreement that's been proposed and only approve a future plan that would build fewer houses. Of course, that would cut down on the property value for the Green family who owns that now. I won't speak for them, but I would think she can and would freely cut down the trees that are there if it meant that she would get a higher price for her property from a future builder. And who would, by the way, be under no obligation to only build four houses, of course, they can go as high as six with the current R1 zoning. Or work with the nearby residents, as the current developer seems to have done, to address concerns about the failed wall and storm wall. So I brought trees. My thoughts are the borough is going to end up with more trees at the end of this process if the proposal is, goes through than we currently have. They will be healthy. They will be appropriately placed, unlike what we have now. If however, we force the owner indirectly to cut trees down to get a fair price for her property, then they just deal with it and will end up displaced. You know, and I guess I'll also say that a plan where some private citizen comes in and buys the property and builds a small, reasonable, single family house, cleans everything up, preserves the healthy trees would be ideal. We would all love it. I would love that. The Keep Media Green people would love that. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be an option. And I think it's not fair for the borough to force the Green family to keep waiting indefinitely for that fantasy to come true. I think the borough needs to protect the rights of citizens who want to conduct what is a lawful real estate deal or development project that meets the borough ordinance. It's a, it's a high rate plan. People would object to that to say, well, there's waivers. I won't really talk to the preliminary final. I think that's a procedure rather than substantive objection. I think the waivers that have been proposed for offset turnaround curbs trips, that sort of thing, were done to maximize green space, minimize impervious coverage. The developer, in my view, without waivers, did not need to do that in any way. It's what made sense for everyone, so I think it makes sense to approve that. As far as the trees go, my understanding and my opinion is that they could meet the ordinance by putting trees in the aqua east or awkward locations throughout the property, which of course would make it susceptible to being cut out in the future. So the waiver, in my view, was, was more like a proposal to do what made sense for all residents, future and current. And, I guess I should approve it. So just to close, please vote yes, because I think it's what's best for everyone in the borough and the neighborhood where we live, and mostly so you don't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Spann. Kids, we're here.
Hello. My name is Rosemary Fratellini, and I live at 126 West 6th Street. And I just want to let you know, I think, you know, I was very good friends with Roger Green, and one of the reasons why he let those trees grow is that he really liked living in what he considered a preserve. And I have to tell you, for those of us who are bird watchers, in the trees there are three to four different kinds of woodpeckers, owls, and some beautiful birds that do stay there. They don't gravitate out of the area. And I think the lust to all of us neighbors and citizens for those trees is that we're going to lose the livelihood that we have. And we appreciate it. It's wonderful being out there in the morning and listening to the birds and watching them. And I feel that as we cut down our trees and become more densely populated, that we are losing our nature, our livelihood. So I just wanted to let you know that we see it more as a preserve, the way Roger had envisioned it originally. So, I mean, with this, excuse me, with his death, I know that the family wants to do something with the property. However, the upside of that coin is that it's become like a bird, a wild bird refuge. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that's one of the reasons why I think we're all been trying to support Keep Media Green, because not only are we losing our trees, but we're also losing the hungry birds, the owls, the woodpeckers, and blue jays, and all the other different kinds of cardinals and birds that we have in the area. And planting little trees to start with is not going to bring that livelihood back again. So I just wanted you to think about that. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much.
(Applause).
Hi. Dennis Snyder, and I live at 132 West 7th Street. And I'm here tonight as I was disappointed to learn of the plan tonight for the motion to be put forward to approve the development plan for 115 West 6th Street as a preliminary final plan. I had a chance to watch the recording of the borough workshop, you know, a few, a few days later. I know all of you don't know me personally, because I just moved into the borough last, last October, and perhaps someday that can change. But one thing about me is that when I'm not here, I spend my days as a scientist. And in order to, I've learned that in this life of work, it is important to make decisions based on data. Like, our mantra at work is follow the data. Over the past six months, you know, I've become involved in just listening and gathering data at these meetings, you know, about, you know, what was going to be, and what the plans were to occur behind my house that I had just purchased just two months prior. So, you know, and what I've heard is, one, the Delaware County Planning Commission has recommended that the waiver for preliminary final approval not be granted. Our own Media Borough Planning Commission has recommended that the preliminary final approval not be granted for this project. Also, I know Mrs. Spannos, you know, he has the right to his opinion, but the majority of the neighbors of the Centennial Woods in our neighborhood are opposed to the development destruction of the Centennial Woods. I even recently spoke to another neighbor whose property is also on our block, who lets the Centennial Woods in. They oppose it as well, and they, they told me they're afraid to speak out. And, and quite honestly, after watching the video of the workshop meeting from a couple weeks ago, after seeing some of the decor with some of the members of the borough council during that meeting, I'm not surprised what they would have that feeling. And, you know, and also, the majority of the citizens of the entire borough are opposed to development destruction of the Centennial Woods. At every meeting, the numbers in opposition are nearly 10 to 1. And additionally, over 100 citizens came out to support saving the Centennial Woods earlier in the spring, and I have yet to see the same support come to, come out to support to develop and destroy the woods. What I have also learned over the years is that it's just as important to not make decisions when you do not have all of the data. I was at the planning commission meeting when the arborists were presented that on the property, two of the trees are dead and 18 trees are compromised. What I didn't see presented at the workshop meeting by either Mr. Lynn or Mr. Paul, is that the arborist also stated that the woods are in better condition than what has previously been presented in other meetings by the developer, and that even those compromised trees provide value to the land. As a concerned neighbor, that this plan is, is being rushed through in conjunction with Keep Media Green, additional data was also gathered in the form of a letter of an assessment that was performed by an engineer, Michelle Adams, at Delorean Design, that was submitted to the Borough Council Engineer yesterday. I just wanted to go through a summary of that letter quickly, that, in her opinion, that a significant engineering issue related to stormwater beds for lot three and four, which could cause unstable slope conditions along Centennial Avenue, which would create a safety issue on Centennial Avenue. The accuracy of the calculated runoff values and the plan are questionable, as that the incorrect land cover coefficient for meadows was used and not woods, and that the methodology of calculation is not performed in line with the PA storm manager. In addition, infiltration rate for the test pit two for stormbeds three and four were above the recommended maximum infiltration rate. Lot two stormwater bed is located in a fashion that could potentially contribute to drainage of the basement of lot four, and that they strongly urge that the borough should require a slope stability analysis for lot three and four, as well as analysis of potential subsurface flow on the impacts of lot four, home for, for the lot two storm bed. So, all of this data to me, I believe, strongly shows that this plan is not ready to be approved as a preliminary final plan, as there are engineering concerns that could impact the safety of the neighborhood and should be evaluated fully before final approval.
(Applause). But he also is president of the US Council. Please come forward and speak to the microphone. Karen, if we could just?
I will.
All right. Thank you.
Terry Ronzi, 342 West 4th Street, and the co-chair of Keep Media Green. Great Canadian poet once uttered the iconic word, "Stone it always seem to go that we don't know what we got until it's gone." That's Joni Mitchell for the young folks in the room, big yellow taxi. Before I address council, I'm going to be brief. I'd like to say thank you to a few people. First, is the developer here? Yeah, Mr. Plummer. Thank you for offering to sell the property to the borough. Shows you're a businessman who knows a win-win situation when you see one, and for that I am truly appreciative. I also would like to thank all my brothers and sisters from the Green Movement who have come out, even in the face of pretty certain disappointment tonight, and have spoken so graciously. You guys are the brave, green hearts of media. For the folks out there watching this on YouTube livestream or on cable television, whether you're for Keep Media Green, or you think we're a bunch of possum, loving lunatics, or whether you are sat on the sidelines for this, thank you for being part of great town because, you know, all of us together make the fabric of what we all know is a very special place, Keep Media Pennsylvania. But, so I'd like to address council. First, I'd like to give a shout out to councilperson Paul Robinson. I know I'm not his favorite person right at the moment, but I've gone to about 100 meetings over the past 10 years, these council meetings. Paul's been on the short end of six to one votes more than 10 times than all the rest of the council people combined. And although we often disagree with each other, what I respect about Paul is that he doesn't hide in a pack. He doesn't need to be the one who makes things comfortable. If he feels that it's not right for the town and that it's, that he doesn't understand the logic or agree with something, he's willing to be that one vote. And for that, Paul, I appreciate that, even though I'm anticipating I'm not going to like how you vote later in the evening.
We need to get to discussing.
Yes, and I'm sure we will over coffee somewhere. To the rest of council, I would just say, I would ask you to follow Paul's example and, and vote your conscience tonight. If you truly believe that the developers are in this waiver for preliminary final, and it's the straight and narrow and fair thing to do, by all means, you should vote yes. But if you've seen the materials that Keep Media Green sent to you and, and listened to our case about, the ordinance says when it's a major project, it goes through a preliminary planning process, and then it goes back to the Delaware County Planning Commission and the Media Planning Commission, and then it goes through a final planning process. That's what the ordinance says, but you can grant a waiver if you believe they've met the case and they followed the, the prescription of the Pennsylvania, you know, code. So if you don't believe it's straight and narrow, and it's, and that not everything is tight as a drum on this project with stormwater management, steep slope control, tree management, the, the wall, the retaining wall on the homeowners association on the south side, that there's a lot of things permits not yet secured, then you'll say, we're not saying we're against the program, but let's do it by the book, preliminary first, then go back to the planning commissions and have the final process. And if you believe that, you should vote no, or I hope you would. For the bigger issue, if you truly believe that building four houses, luxury houses, that are going to cost 800, 900,000, maybe a million dollars, that this is what the town really needs, then preserving open space, you should vote yes. If that's what your conscience tells you, if you think that's best for media, I hope that you vote yes tonight. However, if you do believe that rather than building four luxury houses, it's better to preserve the trees so we can have cleaner air, cleaner water, and, and future generations that can have some green space in this town, then I hope that you vote no. Thank you. Oh, I did have one other thing to say. I wanted to thank all seven members of Borough Council. On January 6th, our democracy got attacked by a bunch of numbskulls who went and were chanting "Anglicans." Local government is the, is the backbone of democracy. And I don't want to sit in the table where you're sitting. I appreciate that you guys take on the issues from parking, the dogs barking, chickens and rats and complaining citizens. I mean, you all, I, I've come to 100 meetings, and I know the complexity and diversity of the issues that you have to deal with. And it's not just the two hour meetings that people see on the television lately, the four hour meetings, thanks to Keep Media Green. But I know that you need to do a lot of study in order to do your job. And so sincerely, I do appreciate that, and I thank that of you. I mean, we have different beliefs about budget priorities, different beliefs about development policy than many folks here, but I do want you to know that I appreciate the time and effort that you all put into this job. So, thank you.
(Applause). Karen, if we could, we either have some emails or voice messages?
I have emails.
She'll talk now. Tis talk loudly.
This is from Bob Conard, 120 West 7th Street. My wife Debbie and I are unable to attend tonight's Borough Council meeting, but once we saw our strong support for the developers' plan to build four single, excuse me, family homes on the property at 115 West 6th Street. We live at 120 West 7th Street, and the back of our property directly abuts the property at 115 West 6th. We have heard the arguments for preserving the woods on this property and are aware that the borough has no intention of purchasing the property for this purpose. As primary stakeholders who are most directly affected by what happens on this property, we feel that the proposed plan to build four single family homes is the best alternate and is in the best interest of the adjacent properties. We urge Borough Council to grant the preliminary final approval through development application so this process can move forward. Thank you for consideration of our comments. And moving to another subject. And moving to another subject. One of the heavily, West Second Street. Several years ago, Media Borough stole an easement to Sunoco, oops. An easement to Sunoco for installment of Sunoco's Maricose Pipeline. The land is in Middletown Township near Chester Creek, the Turner Apartments and the Sunoco valve station. The construction was expanded beyond the legal easement in 2020. Attached with our photos, I believe you all got this by email, council. The geology which presented the original Horizon directional drilling under the ground surface continues to pose problems for the adjacent Glendale Station Apartments, the homes in the middle of the neighborhood, Baltimore Pike New Estate, Blue Spire, and Grand Forum and Tired Freedom, the Slade Park Soccer Field, Valley Road, Pride Well, and West Williams Township in Chester County. Delaware and Chester Counties mark the end of the 350-mile project, has caused increased infant mortality at the initial fracking site, produced radioactive waste, damaged air quality, ruptured natural aquifers, and spilled drilling fluid into sensitive motorways. At the end of its route, the natural gas liquid contents will be stored in Marcus Hill and then transferred to York to make plastic. The contents of this pipeline are so hazardous that an explosion could reach a mile away and likely burn for nearly a day before first responders could approach. In other words, the construction would have to be flawless, and the operator would have to be infallible for this to be considered appropriate for a densely populated area. Also, local lands of this pipeline were property owners and municipalities who felt that they had no choice but to accept payment amounts to their government to learn that the company was deceitful and negligent in its practices. Assigned contracts often included nondisclosure agreements, excuse me, and required secrecy about public safety laws, which continue to be hidden in certain areas of the land security. I am submitting this statement to have my decision entered into the record and ask that council reflect upon the generational impacts when private profit is given priority over public safety and development is allowed to preserve the natural. This last one is from Richard Ziegler. He does not provide an address. I would like to raise concern regarding the recent bill-state reassessment and subsequent tax adjusting. While I recognize that this is not under the jurisdiction of Borough Council, I would ask if there is any support or evidence that Borough Council can provide in this matter. I am aware that a reassessment can be appealed, however, a minor adjustment in the assessment will still net a significant tax increase. Any assistance that council could provide in addressing this matter would be greatly appreciated.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else, Karen?
Let me check. Yeah.
Okay. I guess we still have someone who is president of the US Council who wishes to address the issue. Please come forward to the microphone. Tell us who you are.
My name is Wesley Rose, and I live at 146 West Sixth Street. My home is on top of the Centennial Wall, Centennial Avenue and Orange Street. I hope from prior reading that you're aware that that wall has come down twice because of water. And both times, I have, I've been there for 20 years, and this has happened twice. I have lived in that home, and I still live in that home. And I implore you, please, you need to look at the water problem in that area. It is a major problem. It was already stated by someone else. Also, the runoff on that hill that comes down Sixth Street, it is a problem. Everyone needs to go out in a big storm and just watch it fly down the road, just the way it comes right into our parking lot and goes underground. And if we have four more homes built above us, that water is going to be a problem if it comes out onto Sixth Street in any way and coming down into our community, that's six and off. I also would like to make a comment that I am one of those people that have been afraid to speak. I'm afraid of always speaking, you know, and I'm afraid to come forward to these meetings, but this affects me and my home, the community where I live. The majority of the people that have spoken to council and borough regarding this issue, we all live there, in that area, and most of us are very negative and disagree with this project, and there's only been a few, two, three, maybe four people that are for it. And if it passes, I don't understand why. This is everybody's hometown. We should have a voice, so all of us should have a common, a community voice, and the majority here speaks. Thank you.
All I watched has been a little bit over the lower public comment, which is fairly typical of our public ethic these days. We thank everyone who has joined us and who has tried to speak. We do have the rest of our agenda to go through, and we will start with Borough Manager's report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one brief thing to mention as I'm asking council to come to workshop events in two weeks and think about the space that we're in. I would love to have a discussion. I would love to get feedback from you all during the workshop, whether or not you're comfortable staying here, whether you want to move to the council chambers for both meetings, or potentially go back to the conference room for workshop at the council chambers for legislation. So, hope to have that discussion in two weeks. That's it.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Ms. Foreman at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along then to the engineer's report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. A number of updates on capital projects. We did have the bid opening for the 2021 road program. There was strong interest, the bids were competitive. The understanding was that we've made recommendations for the July meeting, and it still gives us plenty of time to have the installation of improvements prior to the start of the school year. The installation at Fifth and Brimlet for Park is moving along. I trust that some of you have had the opportunity to get over there. It's starting to look a lot like a park instead of a destruction site. The contractor says hopefully by end of June, we'll be ready for final launch to make sure that all the improvements have been satisfactorily installed. We also did have the bid opening for the armory, for media armory. I believe there's some recommendation later in the agenda, we'll have that forwarded. Very happy with the pricing with that one, very happy with the contractor. There is still a lot of work that has to happen with the armory, but we also did, and I was delighted about this, a alternate price through the road program to have the driveway area resurfaced. So, it's very good. As far as the other projects, we have a few other capital projects in town at the moment. One are the A P S circles, which we're working through with that contractor to have that installed. Also, wayfinding. We're working with the wayfinding contractor, Allied Signage, through the cement process to make sure that they have everything they need prior to implementing that project. A full vote as far as capital projects, things around town. Unless there are any other questions, that is all I have to do.
Does any member of council have any questions for the engineer?
Yes, Mr. President. Just one, Kevin. If we do the Trader Joe's parking lot, will we be able to use liquid fuels funds, or do we have to use other funds?
I can check with Penn Up. My understanding would be, one of the things is, I want to be having a number of different prices, just to get the comps at a bare minimum. Again, it would be a matter of getting clear with the project, mortgage, ours, that kind of.
Okay. But I want... Your intentions to use liquid fuels?
That's correct.
Great.
But I'll make sure that everything we do is in progress.
Any other questions from council? All right, we'll move along then to the solicitor's report. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything.
Do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Scott at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
First, I want to give the police, the police report. Attached, we had complaints, 550 complaints just had during the month of May. Attached are the incidents, the February, when I was in Salem. Couple other notes, Officer Janet Scott and her husband welcomed the first child, Jamison Michael, born on June 1st at 1:29 a.m. I miss her for a lot of reasons. One is, we're down a couple officers, so she brought up the three, but she's been a great pickup, I guess you would say, when we stole her from another police department a few years ago. Jamison, Michael, Scott.
How many pounds?
I think pounds. I know this is important. I would say somewhere between pounds and... Chief met with the Media Police Accountability Committee on June 16th to exchange ideas and to improve community and police relations, and we will probably be hearing a lot more along those lines also. Residents should also be aware the thieves have been stealing catalytic converters from vehicle, from vehicle all throughout Delaware County and surrounding counties. We are two, there were two reported incidents in the borough. This past weekend, starting Sunday, several unlocked vehicles were rifled through, and a variety of items were taken, including wallets containing credit cards. So, lock your cars. We go through this every couple of years. This happens, and it happens a lot, then it goes away, and then it comes back again. I have three proclamations here. I'm not going to read them all, I'm just going to give you summaries. First, Michael, as well, you and I talked about this earlier tonight, I'm just going to read three paragraphs, but there's going to be Pride Day on the 27th at 11 a.m., and I think the place, it's probably Plum Street Mall, I assume. That's what I'm going to do. First paragraph is, "Whereas the borough of Media fosters the value and importance of diversity among all people who live, work, and visit here, acknowledging that they cut across ethnic, cultural, racial, gender identity, and sexual orientation boundaries. Whereas the borough of Media welcomes all people who live, work, and visit here regardless of their nationality, origin, color, race, religion, age, sex, orientation, or gender identity, and show up," and I'll read the rest of the two. Another one, and I'm not going to read this, this is for everyone, but I'm sure you've heard us, you've heard us talk about the Jason House. The Jason House is in Media and Upper Province. Each of us heard a little bit of it, but it's a very famous house. The Republic of Korea was actually founded and set up there. 1947, Philip Jason, who lived in Media from 1925 on, he was the first Korean doctor in this country. He had an office on State Street, and he bought that house in 1925, lived there until he died in 1951. But the country of Korea, South Korea, is a model, and it was Jason, it was, he was the one who really put it together. Simon Lee became the first president because Doctor Jason was just unhealthy enough. So, we're having another ceremony over there on Saturday again. I have 12, 12 different items that I'm going to be talking about there, and so everyone just can't wait to hear. And another one, this is a very special person, we're going to be honoring also on Saturday, quarter of 11.
Which Saturday?
This one. I mean, three days. It's honoring Donald Trusty. And this is short, so I'm just going to read it. "Whereas Donald Trusty has been a dedicated member of the Media Borough Recreation Board for more than 44 years. Donald is known for to be the backbone of the Recreation Board, and goes above and beyond these events fund and..." And Donald is well-respected and appreciated for all the years of hard work, dedication, and volunteer service he has provided to the residents of Media Borough, and therefore the Media Borough Council and Media Recreation recognizes for many years a outstanding service by renaming the newly remeet, re... Red. That's very, you're just memorized today. As Media totlot, as the Trusty totlot. So, that's ready for Donald. I want to say something that I wasn't going to say, and I just want to bring this up a little bit. Over the last, Media was a mess back in the 1970s, in the beginning of the 80s, and we've been uphill for a lot of reasons ever since. And quite frankly, I see us maybe peaking out at some point, so I think a lot of what the ideas that you had in forming some committees to look at, how are we going to be able to keep all these residents we have here, keep them here? And I don't think we have an answer to that. So, I wanted to bring that up. I think Terry and Rob, you've been doing a great job, and I hope you'll be part of, you know, maybe the bias around this sort of thing. But I do see some troubles coming, not the near future, but down the line. We've had it good. State Street is doing wonderful. They were sold out last night or the other night, last night, on State Street, but there are a lot of new neighbors that aren't going to be living here in five or 10 years. So, let's see what we can do. That's it.
And that's not to be followed, and Gene Worley, who also are committed to that cause as well, in Judy's book earlier this evening. Does anyone have any, anyone in council have any questions for the mayor at this time? Seeing that there are none, we'll move along to the council committee reports. We will start, as always, with Councilman Robinson, Properties, Public Works, and Fire.
Good evening. I'll try to be... I'll try to be brief to get moving on. As I always do, each month, I encourage our residents and residents who'd be interested in serving our, with our fire company to stop by, talk to our chief. We're always in need of either fire flayers and/or volunteers that could be working on the administrative side of the fire department. The chief provided me the report for May. The fire department had 37 runs. Our EMS unit had 215 runs. Some interesting points that the chief brought up, which he normally keeps his report very short. Media had to respond to a fire in Concord Township, a multiple-unit townhouse fires in Newtown Township. We had a car fire in East Jefferson Street that is still under investigation. We were asked to be the third alarm for a building fire in the city of Chester, as well as an apartment fire in the borough of Brockton. So, as you can see, even though it's Media Fire Company, we are called throughout the county to assist and provide medical attention. The chief, once again, wanted to thank council. The air packs are in, in place, and are currently being, being used. With regards to agenda items, number one is to discuss the C B G grant and the orange light, or Orange Street decorative lights. I'm going to table that. Our engineer and our public works director were looking at possible alternatives, so we can pull off on that until hopefully our July meeting. Our engineer referenced the Armory and/or Trader Joe's property with regard to doing some masonry work and roof work with regards to the Armory. We received three bids. The low bid is D and A Masonry Incorporated at a low bid of $194,400. The high bid was at $224,000. So, I will make the motion that we approve and enter into an agreement with D and A Masonry Incorporated for the base bid is $119,400. Add alternates is $75,000, even. Total is $194,400. So, again, the base bid is what we'd be approving, so I make a motion that we approve the base bid of $119,400.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion on motion? Hearing that there is none, all those in favor of pouring a bid for armor, armor maintenance to D and A Masonry, the amount of $119,400, please say aye.
Yes.
If opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And last on my agenda is I think the motion would be advertised to go out the bid for maintenance on the borough facilities here, for residents that have not lived here that that long. We have been in this facility for well over 20 years. It is an entire square block in which Borough Council purchased from a retirement home back... back in the early 90s. It is now 20 some years old, and it's time that we need to do a little bit of work on. It's probably one of the things about government, your tendency to not try to take care of the, the house we live in, we're looking at taking care of the roads and services to our residents. But it's been 20 some years, there are some things that need to be improved. So I am making a motion that we authorize our solicitor, of course, our manager, engineer, and our public works director to put together and go out to bid for some maintenance with regards to the borough facilities. And that is in the form of a motion, Mr. President.
There is a second on the motion. Is there any discussion on motion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor of authorizing the advertising of bids for maintenance of borough facilities, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Does any member of council have any questions for Councilman Robinson at this time? We'll move on to MBA, historic compensating and search service, Councilman Lisa Johnson. Lisa will, Amy will give you the microphone.
First item on my agenda is mass gathering permit for the First Baptist Church of Media, their vacation Bible school, which they've been holding for a year. They would like to do this again on the week of July 6th through the 9th, from 6 p.m. to 9 p.m.
Second that. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion, inserting a motion? I think that's the call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the First Baptist Church of Media's Vacation Bible School, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second item is a new event, a mass gathering permit for the Front Street Food Truck Event. Now, this is an event that's basically going to take the place of an old event, the Media Food Festival, since we're not having that this year because of COVID. We didn't have it last year either. But this Front Street Food Trucks Event is a little misnamed because you don't have to have a food truck to be involved with. But it's for, it's for the restaurants that are not on State Street. The State Street restaurants get the advantage of participating in dining under the stars every week. But a lot of the side street restaurants, like Pan Ojos, and the New Town House, and Bittersweet Kitchen, those type of restaurants, don't have that opportunity. So the MBA decided they'd like to create this event for them, along with the retailers, to have an outdoor dining event on Front Street, I believe, from Orange to Plum, and also on Better and Square, from Jasper to Front. They're going to have music, they're going to have food, of course, and, you know, just people out and about. Hopefully, the weather is good because it's a regular shine event. It is on Sunday, August 29th, between 7:00 and 10:00. The event starts at noon, goes till 4 p.m. Breakdown must be done by 6 p.m. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on motion?
Couple of questions. Electricity, I'm assuming there are any restaurants that are going to be there, they're going to need more electricity, and where are we going to get that electricity?
I don't personally know where they're going to get electricity from. I know that Media Five Miler has bands on Better and Square, and that's where this band will be held there as well. So if they needed electricity in the past, pick that. I don't know exactly the, the way they're going to get electricity. I'm going to look at my minutes here. Yeah, I don't see that being addressed.
This is because this is for restaurants that aren't located on State Street.
Like the Pan Ojos.
Right.
That's mostly the P's, but, you know, it's very ask, and I'm interested in participating where there's still open spots, and the rest is Media Restaurants.
Especially Media Restaurants.
Until all, until all the restaurants have been asked, and then, once they've been asked and there's still the open spots, then other restaurants can participate at a higher price.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving mass gathering permit application for the first Front Street Food Truck Event, please say aye. Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Sorry, my picture's a little mixed up. The next one is an old, an old favorite called the Fall Super Sunday from Town Talk Newspapers. It's going to be held on September 26th.
September 19th?
I'm so sorry, I almost read my own name. September 19th, the rainy, was September 26th, and it's still. There was a question around that, but. Okay, so, like I said, this is an old time event that people enjoy. It's set up, begins at 7 a.m., and the event starts at 9:00, ends at 4:00, and breakdown by 5:00. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call the question then. All those in favor of approving mass gathering permit application for this year's Fall Super Sunday, and it's been a while since we've had a Super Sunday. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number four is a mass gathering permit application for the old favorite of the Fall Arts and Crafts Show, that too is by the Town Talk Newspapers. Now, this one is on October 3rd, and postponed from June because of COVID. But we're now planning on October 3rd from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m., with a rainy to October 10th. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the Fall Arts and Crafts Show, October 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the last one is yet another old time favorite, the Mass Gathering Permit Application for the Media Halloween Parade, scheduled for Saturday, Saturday, October, again, from noon to 4:00. The rainy is the next day, I have on October 31st, noon to 4:00.
Second.
Motion made, been made seconded. Is there any discussion on motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit for the Media Halloween Parade, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilman Lisa Johnson? Seeing as there are none, we'll move along then to Councilman Amy Johnson, Periphery Farmer Market, State Street, and the Market Advisor, Council.
Good evening. I have one item, legislative item on my agenda, and then clinical announcements. The first is the adoption of green and fair procurement guidelines. This was in an effort of both EAC and Transition Town, not Transition Town, Media Fair Trade, sorry. And this is a set of guidelines to help guide the borough in the purchasing and leasing of green products and services from local businesses, certified green businesses, and Fair Trade certified businesses. So this statement has been reviewed by all staff, and I am looking on the council. I think we discussed this last, two weeks ago at workshop, that I would be making a motion to approve this. I'm happy to report that we do, you know, in a report by staff, that most of these guidelines are already being done, but we feel, EAC and Fair Trade feel it's important just to have an official set of guidelines. So I'm going to make that in the form of a motion to adopt the green and fair procurement guidelines of our media.
Second.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Any discussion on motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of adopting the green and fair procurement guidelines, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay.
Do we need to make a veto?
Oh, we definitely need to do it.
Okay, great.
So the motion passes, with the majority of those present, the correct, the, the Councilman Williams said it is.
Okay. Thank you to my fellows. Well, like I always do, I like to make, remind everybody about the Media Farmers Market, which is held every Sunday from 10:00 to 1:00, and it sits on a town street between State and Front. I encourage you all to visit the market for a variety of delicious and unique and local foods, and encourage you to support the local farmers and producers. And one more announcement. I am sure that if you are watching from home or sitting in this audience, that everyone has hopefully gotten this flyer. This is the first time that anything has been mailed out to our residents in many, many years. So it's an exciting, just review of some new things and some things just to remind you about, about our recycling, curbside composting and trash. It's a four page flyer that reviews trash pickup schedule. There's a color coded map here of what trash pickup is. Also, letting everybody know that yard lease is now going to be able, you're able to put your yard lease out every Wednesday, before it was a monthly item. However, our residents usually put things out every day. I must give props to our public works, who spoils us residents and picks up whatever sitting out, whether it be contents of somebody's home or yard lease. So now it's official that you will get your yard lease picked up every Wednesday with a bucket that has a recipe you can fill your cut-in weeds with. And it's just one more thing that we can divert going to our incinerator. So I encourage you all to visit our free spoke page, where you might find a fun video about getting your buckets, and how to get your bucket, and all the details about how to compost. You will be able to pick up this yellow bucket starting July 1st at Media Barrel Mall, as well during normal business hours, as well as Media Farmers Market every Sunday. So more to come, there'll be more information coming in our amazing newsletter, Media Newsletter, but yeah, I'm excited to say that Media is now a composting town.
You should watch the video, you might recognize a few people on the media. Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Councilman Amy Johnson at this time? See, there are, there are announcements move along to my portion of the agenda, Community Development and Historic Architectural Review Board, and Vice President Amy Johnson has the mic. Item number one is an item that was a late ringer. It arrived at the station a little bit late for us to discuss it at workshop, and I've asked our manager to provide us with the necessary background for us to understand the issue, so we can take a vote on it tonight.
So the administration came across a new grant called Healing the Planet Grant Program, coming out of Keep California Beautiful, and in collaboration with Giant Food Stores. And it is a, up to $25,000, and it is for community green spaces. So we thought it was a perfect grant for our Plum Street Park that we are, you know, the council has already tried to pursue, trying to make grants for that project. This particular product, grant, project, there is encouraged cash match, but not required. The great thing is that we can use our DCNR grant for Plum Street Park as our cash match. So there's no additional outlay. And the grant application deadline is June 30th, so that's why we're bringing to you kind of quickly, and we would afford it to here for considerations.
Thank you, Brittany. So that's the back drop, and with that backdrop, I'm moving authorized to apply for the Healing the Great Planet Grant Program for park infrastructure at Plum Street Mall.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on motion?
There is, correct, DC, the DCNR grant is what we're going to use for matching the grant, Giant.
Yes, we're allowed to do that, use that.
All those in favor of authorizing to apply to Healing the Planet Grant Program, the Keep America Beautiful Giant for Park Infrastructure at Plum Street Mall, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is the reason why many people are in the audience tonight. It is a resolution 2021 dash 35, with a preliminary and a final land development application at 115 West 6th Street. We have a prepared resolution, all members of council have received it, because this has been, in all interest of this, in all topical credit interest, I'm going to walk through many of the particulars of the resolution, and then I'll make, make the motion that we approve the application preliminary and final. So there are, of course, conditions to approval, and they are listed in the resolution, which all members of council should have, and I will begin walking through them. The developer shall comply with the recommendations of the Borough, Borough Engineers Review Letter of the Borough Committee. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer reconstructing the stormwater, I'm sorry, the storm sewer inlet located on the south side of West 6th Street, so that such inlet captures stormwater flowing in a westward direction down West 6th Street. The borough finds it impractical for developer to locate on lot 36 of the required replacement trees accordingly, with respect to such 36 replacement trees pursuant to section 257-41.d6 of the SADL, as a subdivision land development ordinance. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer either, one, installing replacement trees at other sites in the borough, and/or, two, paying the equivalent cash value as agreed upon by the borough engineer for replacement plantings into a special fund established for the purpose of planting trees in the borough. The borough engineer shall determine the exact amount of such 36 replacement trees to be installed, and the locations within the borough where such trees shall be planted. To the extent the borough engineer directs that fewer than 36 trees be planted at other locations in the borough, developer shall pay the fee in lieu for the balance of such 36 trees. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon the expansion of the Media Walk at 6th Tree Evaluation Report, prepared by Brown Qualm &amp; Associates, to include more specific long-term maintenance provisions, with written reports and updates to be prepared and submitted to the borough on a biannual basis during the 18-month period following completion of the development. I believe this should be semi-annual basis.
As far as the schedule of the work?
Yes.
Every six months?
Yes. Otherwise, the biannual period will be.
Will be every two years, correct?
That's right. Developers shall execute and deliver to the borough a perpetual maintenance agreement relating to the stormwater management facilities of the property. As required, in accordance with the borough's stormwater ordinance, the maintenance agreement shall be recorded against the property. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer obtaining sewer module approval or waiver therefrom from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer obtaining consent from Ample America and from Washington for water service and sanitary sewer service, respectively. and for Washington for water service and sanitary sewer service respectively. Consistent with NPC Section 509, prior to the borough's execution of the plan, the developer shall submit financial security for site improvements, including without limitation, street trees, shady trees, both onsite and offsite, sidewalks, stormwater maintenance facilities, and landscaping, in an amount satisfactory to the Borough Engineer and a form satisfactory to the Borough Solicitor. Additionally, the developer shall execute, A, a development agreement, and B, a financial security agreement to govern the terms of the financial security pursuant to the NPC and subject to the satisfaction of the Borough Solicitor. Consistent with Section 513A of the NPC, upon the Borough Council's approval of the plan, developer shall have ninety days of such fin, of final approval, or ninety days after the state of delivery to developer of the approved plan signed by the Borough Council. Following completion of conditions imposed for such approval, whichever is later, record the plan in the Office of the Delaware County Recorder of Deeds. Valued and complied with NPC Section 513A shall render the approval of the plan null and void. The proposed development shall be completed in accordance with the contents of the plan, notes on the plan, this approval resolution, and the land development agreement. The cost of accomplishing, satisfying, and meeting all the terms and conditions and requirements of the plan, the notes on the plan, this approval resolution, and the land development agreement shall be borne entirely by the developer and shall be at no cost to the borough. Developer shall notify the Borough Manager, Borough Building Officer, and Borough Engineer at least seventy-two hours prior to the initiation of any grading or ground clearing so that the borough may ensure that all appropriate erosion and sedimentation control facilities have been properly installed. The borough shall not sign the plan until developer shall have paid to the borough all applicable fees and outstanding professional repair fees of the Borough Engineer and Borough Solicitor, and otherwise complied with the pre-construction requirements of this approval resolution. Under the provisions of the NPC, the developer has the right to accept or reject conditions imposed by the Borough Council on final approval. In the absence of an appeal filed in writing within thirty days from the date of this resolution, the condition set forth herein shall be deemed to have been accepted by the developer. If the borough receives written notice of, an appeal or rejection of, any of the conditions set forth herein within thirty days from the date of this resolution, this approval shall be deemed to have been rescinded and application denied. Uh, there are a list of waivers. I will walk through them. Uh, first, Section 257-13 requires a submission of separate preliminary and final plans. Uh, the developer proposes a combined preliminary and final plan. Section 257-16b2k, prior to the plan to depict the locations and dimensions of all existing streets, railroads, sewers, and sewage systems, et cetera, within a hundred feet of the property boundaries, developer requests to show only those features within approximately ten feet of the side property lines and fifty feet within the rights of way to the front and rear. Section 257-21, street standards, developer requests a waiver to permit forty-foot right-of-way and anywhere requiring fifty feet, and seventeen-to-twenty foot wide carway anywhere within twenty-four feet required. Section 259-30k, residential driveways, developer requests a waiver to exclude on-lot turnaround areas for lots one and two to allow vehicles to reverse onto the private drive and exit onto Sixth Street. Section 257-dash-31, curbing, developer requests a waiver to construct a vertical curbing along the northern side of the proposed shared access drive to provide sidewalk, facilitate grading, and manage stormwater runoff. Developer proposes depressed curbing along the northern side of the carway. Section 257-dash-32, pending sidewalks, developer requests a waiver to exclude sidewalks along the front, the street front of Centennial Avenue due to existing top collar view and lack of pedestrian access past the site. Developer proposes to provide an access easement to lot, to allow lot four to access, the sidewalk along the proposed shared driveway which connects with Sixth Street. In Section 257-32d1, sidewalks, applicant requests a waiver to exclude the three-foot grass strip between the sidewalk and the carway along the northern side of the private driveway. The request is to provide amountable twenty-four feet wide carway and to minimize the imperious concerns. So that is the resolution with the attached waivers, and I made the motion that we approve the Resolution, uh, 2021-dash-35, which is for the preliminary, final, and development application at 115 West Sixth Street.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, questions? I'd like to take my, I'd like to have a microphone. Um, I have a couple of things I'd like to say, and I have prepared, um, comments as well. But we just heard Brian read the resolution, and those waivers that were mentioned are in the, in the letter we got from Kevin Matson, our Borough Engineer. And, um, they are, they are stated in there, but not all of them are resolved. And so, um, by just agreeing to sign the resolution does not resolve them. So, um, what I'd like to do is tell you my thoughts around this entire project through these unprepared notes. I think that we've lost sight of all the various aspects of this project we need to consider. Certainly, we have heard from many residents of Media about their preference to have the trees on this property remain. It is my preference also to have, to keep the trees on this site, no matter where they are in their life cycle, since all trees, dead or alive, contribute to the healthy environment. It is important to understand the vital connections between plants, including trees, insects, animals, and people. Ignoring some of these connections means you adversely affect them all. Clean air, water management, and cooler temperatures are all benefits from the trees. The condition of our natural environment directly affects our health, both mentally and physically. This is a tremendously important issue. But beyond the green aspect of this project, there are other considerations. First of all, safety. I believe the most critical responsibility of council is to ensure that the safety of the borough, is to ensure the safety of the borough residents. A very serious safety hazard currently exists on the southern quarter of this project. There is a wooden retaining wall that has failed and could collapse, posing danger to the residents and their property. This issue must be dealt with immediately. I understand that the HOA, the Homeowners Association, in the townhouse neighborhood to the south, is responsible for the maintenance of the wall. However, given its current condition, a temporary wall needs to be installed to prevent damage and/or injury if the wall were to collapse. This council should require the developer work with the HOA to share ideas on possible short-term and long-term solutions. This is the idea of neighbors helping neighbors. The developer is a media resident and a well-respected professional in the area, and could certainly contribute his expertise, along with the expertise of his network, to suggest ideas the HOA could use to temporarily shore up the wall now and in the long term replace it. Let me be clear. I am in no way suggesting that this is the responsibility of the developer to fix the wall. The HOA is responsible for the wall. And now that this serious safety issue has come to the attention of this council, we cannot, in good conscience, approve this project until a plan is created to resolve this issue. We cannot allow the project to move forward and potentially exacerbate this hazard. I am willing to facilitate the meetings if the HOA and the developer would like me to help. I am so concerned about this retaining wall that I believe that if a solid plan for its replacement, including the financing, is not submitted to the borough by the HOA in less than three months, this council should not approve this development and should declare an emergency and require the residents of the townhouse community to temporarily move out. This may sound drastic, but unfortunately, there have been situations within the borough where homeowners have very seriously neglected their responsibility to maintain their property, and as a result, the borough has to remove the residents for their own safety. I see this as a similar situation. Finally, there are nine other issues reported on the letter dated May 28th from the Borough Engineer that need to be addressed before final approval of this project can be considered. I will not go through them since I imagine each of you have read Kevin's letter. However, if you would like to go through them now, I'd be happy to do so. Yes, ma'am. So in the spirit of compromise, I would like to follow the recommendation of our planning convention and not give final approval of this project, but instead give preliminary approval and then work to address the issues mentioned above. We are not ready to give this project final approval. We need to be thorough and thoughtful, and so we, so that we come to the best solution possible for all of them. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Scott, can we take an off-site improvement and condition approval of an application such as this?
Now, we can require developer property owner to, to money, to spend money and do work off premises.
What, what money are we talking about, Ben?
I don't know that we are. But now, the question was, can we require the developer to do off-site work? I mean, we cannot.
We can, we can say that we'd like them to help us.
You can ask them to help. You can ask them to meet with the homeowners association. You can ask them to meet with the borough. You can convene meetings, you can, but can you compel the adjacent property owner to fix the retaining wall, contribute money towards it? No.
I'm not arguing.
I understand that, but I'm being asked to fix.
But the homeowners have had that problem with the retaining wall for how many years now? Fifty? Who said fifty?
Forty, it was known forty-seven years ago, it might be.
So obviously, it's not a problem for them, or they would have had it repaired, don't you think? If it's a safety issue, they would have done something about it. Well, maybe not in forty-seven years. Maybe thirty years ago, they would have done something about it. Ten years ago. I, I don't know that they mentioned that at all, as, and the members getting up and speaking, they didn't say anything about, we're going to fix the retaining wall, and it is their responsibility to step up.
Mr. Matson, with regards to, Ms. Johnson's concern with regards to the retaining wall, do you see, you know, do you see any, if, if the applicant maintains the requirements that we are asking of him, will there be any effect on the development of that property to that of the retaining wall on Centennial in large?
Uh, I, I don't think there's any disagreement. The wall is in terrible condition. The wall, for all intents and purposes, has failed. There are sections that we can just punch right through. So, um, I can't definitively say, you know, is, is the applicant, if somebody started dancing around with a giant machine, what's going to happen to that wall? I personally think that with some good facilitation between a number of different parties, that there's more positive win-win outcome. I've believed that for six months, it's still been bad. However, the plan of record is on the property to north, and the process has, has been vetted very carefully about what's inside the tract boundaries. And everything that I can tell going through that process is that fence is generally compliant. So I would see these two, as two parallel tracks running really at the same time, one of which is the review, vetting, consideration of the land development privilege in terms of tonight. The second one is, how, how does the wall get facilitated? I mean, could the borough be a, a friend of the homeowners association? Probably. Could we facilitate meetings with Aqua? Could we facilitate meetings with grant people? Probably. So again, I don't think it's our legal, uh, ability to, to stop this project from moving forward, contingent upon fixing the wall. And that sort of sets me, because I do see it as a, ah, to some degree, a missed opportunity. But again, the way that the cards are here, again, like you just said, it's not the responsibility of the, of the, you know, the Aqua owner. So I, I think there is most likely a, um, potential to have some additional meetings, sit down with Aqua, talk with the easement. The applicant has also offered a graded easement. That's a huge help. Again, that's something that I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty, forty years, if that was ever offered or considered. In my opinion, breaking down those trees, which weigh tens of thousands of pounds of cheese, takes the pressure off the wall. In my mind, that's a help. I wouldn't believe that's a help. Um, the, the wall, again, to say, your, your language may seem dramatic, but realistically, it's not far off. I mean, if that wall collapsed right now, the earth would fall. Realistically, it would be, it would be very, very disastrous what we're looking at. So there, there's no question that it needs attention. But again, whose responsibility is that? It sounds like it's the HOA. Could the borough be a facilitator or helper? Again, could a number of people come together for help? I, I don't know if it's legally something that we can, um, condition upon what this process is. Again, the wall has been, again, I know there's a number of issues for this application. Stormwater, the trees, a whole series of things. The wall has been, again, from a public safety point of view, the wall has been a, a big concern of mine since day one, which even though it's not on our property, it was in my letters early, because I, I get them, I don't know if they look, it doesn't look good. So, um, I don't know if there's...
Question.
Calm.
So, my, I still believe that indeed, the homeowners need to do something about the wall, whether, no matter what happens to the, to the, they need to do something about it. I don't know that we can force them to do something about it, but I don't think that we should let that stop us from moving forward with it.
I think Kevin's idea is a good idea, that, you know, I think it's two different tracks, Lisa, but because we are borough councils, that we may have the ability to talk to Aqua, we may have the ability to go out to nonprofits that may provide grants, uh, we may be able to help in contacting local financial institutions, you know, to, as you said, facilitate, you know, but Sarah's right, I mean, it is the sole responsibility of the homeowner to that property, uh, as it is with any of them. But if, if there's ways in which we can assist with those of people that we might be able to call up or we know, or something like that, that'd be great. So I think it's, it's two different tracks.
Yeah.
Getting back to the application, your letter today, I mean, do you feel that your, that your, any, your, all your concerns are being addressed? Mr. Matson?
Again, my last review letter was May 28th. There are a number of outstanding issues that are, on the whole, either third-party issues, administrative, uh, things that have already been clarified. Um, again, there's nothing in here that isn't typically what we see. Things like the submission of legal descriptions for the property. It's an administrative item. That's not a backbreaker contract, it's not a non-starter, that's not a matter of they need something really for the fire chief. And the fire chief, again, uh, needs to look at the plan, there's a hydrant at the site. I, I trust that that will be facilitated. I know in agreement, that, that again, it's an administrative item.
You're saying the approval of the fire chief is an administrative?
But again, in my, in my opinion, again, no, I wouldn't say that's administrative, but I would say that conditioned upon his final, uh, feedback, I, I don't see that as an issue. In the twenty years or so that we've been, that I've been dealing with media, I've never seen that particular issue. And his concerns typically are, again, I'm not going to speak for the fire chief, but the location, the fire hydrants, the accessibility of equipment, and again, those sorts of things are generally resolvable, you know, they're, they're in my, just in my...
I'd like to play better ball for three dollars, so that it's not yet resolved, is my point, but it leaves me with a doubt before we improve the issue, in my opinion.
Again, the purpose of the council could be to have a perfectly clean plan, with every eye dotted, every key crossed. Um, it is very common to issue conditional approvals. We've issued conditional approvals on perhaps every land development that I've ever been to issue, La La, Hotel, CBS, Adrian Jackson. Uh, you know, it's a matter of practice or policy, how does the borough want to choose to, um, review these applications? And typically, the conditional approval is not something that is uncommon. I mean, the most... approval is not something that is uncommon. I mean, most municipalities where I serve, both are, it's very common to have conditional approvals, mainly, I think, because the applicants have some homework to do with the third-party events. The sewer plenty module is there. We just got a letter from Aqua saying that there's capacity system. However, the applicant has to go through the suits to satisfy his PAP, pay Aqua for the top of the thing. There's a series of things that, for all intents and purposes, are, they're generally administrative.
Well, and the way it works is that, that if you do a conditional approval and the items of Mr. Matson's letter are in condition, the developer doesn't sign the plans until he's said they're satisfied. So it doesn't move, if they don't get the sewer approval, it doesn't happen. Plans don't get signed, they don't get recorded, it doesn't go forward. So that's, that's the mechanism. That's the, the, that, that we use to make sure they have it. Is that, we may approve them tonight, we may or may not, but whether you approve them tonight or not, they're not going to get signed until the borough engineer's cleared every condition that is included.
I believe we have an application that five years ago came before this council, received initial approval, and they still haven't addressed everything. And they're actually in danger right now of having their, all their, all of their approvals revoked because they haven't satisfied it again in five, there's a five-year window in the NPC. So again, the applicant still has, even after tonight or after the borough acts, whichever comes first, the applicant still has a fair amount of homework to do before the recording process. And the recording process will ultimately, the lots are created at the county, when that plan is recorded.
I'd rather borough council make the final decisions with your guidance as opposed to you making the final decision for us.
Lisa, could I ask why? You know, because I don't have a, a list, but I am comfortable in saying that this council, not councils for the last 30, 40, 50 years, this council has approved more than once plans very similar or with, with changes that may need to be approved, more than once. And I just question why tonight, and there's other plans going on in the borough now, have not, you know, had these scrutiny that this is, that this one plan has had. So I'm, I question why we pick on one, you know?
Not picking on them.
Not picking on them, just trying to get the smart.
I'm sorry, it's Bill.
There are other plans before us now. I have heard you, I, I, you know...
What's the Lewis tract for you?
No. But it's not, you know, but there's, there's other ones, which I find, I don't bring up because I'm waiting for someone to figure it out. But there's other plans out there that, that have gone through the conditional changes and reserve changes and not appealed. But, but again, I mean, I, I'm listening to our engineer and I'm listening to our, our solicitor. Personally, and I'll say it in Terry, you know, first of all, this, thank you. It does mean a lot. I thoroughly enjoy our toe-to-toes and it's good, and it's good for democracy and it's good for us. And I do want to say that, you know, I have lived in this town my entire life. I've had the honor and privilege of sitting in this chair for 25 years. And one of the situations that I've heard, not just tonight, but other nights, is, you know, from the heart and all of that, I wish there are times that I could vote solely from the heart. But as an elected official, we're held to a different standard. We have to follow the laws. We have to follow the presenting, and we have to follow what is in the best interest of not just the 100 people here tonight or the 50 people here tonight, but we represent the 5200 people. And Terry and I, you know, we've discussed this, you know, we agree to disagree. I see other people shaking their heads, but...
Follow your law.
I'm sorry, this is...
Excuse me?
Follow the law.
We are and we have. And so when you...
I'm sorry, gentlemen, there is a time for public comment at the beginning and the end of our meetings. That is your opportunity to speak.
I just want to say tonight that, you know, there are many times that I would love to be able to vote a different way, but I recognize that I have a fiduciary responsibility to vote, maybe not the way I want. And yes, over the 25 years, I have lost more than one friend in this town because I've been forced to respond in a way that I think is in the best interest of the borough and not necessarily in the best interest of me or my neighbor. But so it is difficult. And I do truly appreciate your comments tonight. And there are times that we have to vote on things based on not our heart, but what the law says and what we have put together in our ordinance. If we don't like it, the great thing about democracy is, then we can change it. And if we don't like what we're having tonight, that's the way the law is, we can, we can look to and look at changing it. But that's the way I'm...
So where are we now, Paul?
So I'd like, no, no, if you had a call, please do. Is there anybody else that would like to say something? I do, but I'm going to open it up to others. So I'm going to refer to this because I let myself get distracted.